Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is April 27, 2021. It is 6:32 PM. And this meeting, of course, is being conducted remotely, which means that all our votes will be done via roll call. The first item on the agenda is to actually go through all the agenda items. So we have tonight the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting from April 13, 2021, followed by community relations announcements and open forum. Then we have under appointment and resignations, appointment of Old Home Day Committee, Conservation Agent, Finance Director in Transition, and the resignation of a part-time building inspector. Scheduled appointments is at 7 o'clock, Blue Water Property Group and Bay Colony Property Group Public Information Presentation on Zoning Height Change, change rather, request in the BEP and industrial zones on town meeting, followed by new business, 2021 Scholarship Awards, number two, the Town Administrator Evaluation. Then we will discuss old business, which one thing will be is for four score, change in ownership consent. And then under Board of Selectmen Committee Reports, we have CMRPC, Economic Development Commission, Fire Station Building Committee, LNG Committee, Marijuana Advisory Committee, Sex Offender Bylaw Committee, STIP End Advisory Committee Updates. And that's followed by Board of Selectmen Policy Review, Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives, Student Select Person Report by Henry, Town Administrator Report by Andrew, and other business unknown at time of posting, that our next regular meeting just is going to be May 4, 2021, 6:30 via Zoom or hybrid. And we do have an executive session tonight. So that being said, we'll go right back up to the beginning of the agenda, and I'll look for a motion to approve of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen that was done on April 13, 2021.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Bill?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
My vote aye, so passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Community Relations Announcements and Open Forum. We have a few tonight. The annual town election is this Saturday, May 1, 2021, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Heritage School. The annual town meeting is going to be Monday, May 17, 2021, 7:00 PM at the Charlton Middle School. And of course, masks are required as well as social distancing. That's all I have. Bill, did you have, you had something you wanted to announce?
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. Sure. Just very briefly, two things. One, I'm sure we'll be fainting Chairperson Spewack all evening. As a reminder, this is her last meeting with us, and she'll be missed. But as, I want to be aware that, again, I'm sure we'll be throwing accolades left and right. It'll be nauseating by the end of the evening. The second thing is, on a more personal note, many of us who ride motorcycles, it is now that season. Many of my friends have already been riding. I'm much too wimpy to ride unless it warms up. One thing that's going to be happening is a lot of people are going to be starting their, you know, their, all their lawn maintenance. Please remember, for motorcycles, grass clippings on the road are literally like ice. And whether it's a novice rider or an experienced rider, I've had many friends injured on motorcycles. So outside of the obvious, please be aware when motorcyclists are out, I'm begging everyone watching this, please do not put your glass clippings in the road. Andrew, if you could remind our DPW as well, that that is something that we need to be on the lookout for. So thank you all for your consideration on that. I appreciate it. And Karen, thank you for the time.
Yeah, no problem. Any other board members have an announcement before I open this up to the public?
Karen, I just wanted to say, it is your last meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you. You've really kind of acted as a mentor for me, and there was a tough couple of years. And I think that the reason why I kept my amount of commitment to the town was because of you and set such a great example for me with professionalism and commitment. And I, we will all miss you, and it's a sad meeting for me, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. I appreciate that. Okay.
On that note, I have to, I have to concur with, with Patsy. If you weren't the reason I got involved, but you were part of it. And, and, and you were, you were, you're, you're just a driving force in town and always, in my eyes, legitimate, fair-minded, looked at both sides before making decisions. And definitely a role model for a lot of us, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Again, I know I put a little blurb on my page, my selectman's page, but it really, it really has been an honor and a privilege to serve the town in this capacity and to work with alongside of all of you. It's been challenging at times for all of us, you know, but I think we did a really good job. And it's really kind of bittersweet moving on, but I think, I want to thank all of you too. And the people who, you know, they put us in these seats to, to do the best job that we can do. And I certainly tried to do that. But anyway, I will miss all of you, but I can still tune in and watch. You know, I'm gonna have a good time, so I'll be paying attention. But I do wish you, I think I said, and I do, a calm and productive year for all of you. And Henry, it was a pleasure serving with you this year as well. And I know, I can't wait to see what you're going to do, because I'm sure it's gonna be phenomenal.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And thank you for taking me in. It's been an honor working with all of you, and especially you, Ms. Spewack. You will be missed.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, now, let's move on. And without further ado, I would like to open this up to the general public to see if anyone has anything they want to bring up onto open forum. What I would ask is that you keep it to about three minutes. You tell us your name and your address. And Andrew will tell us if there's anyone who has anything they'd like to bring before the board.
Right now, I don't see anybody with a hand raised right now, so I think you're safe to move on.
All right. Thank you. So we are now on to number four, which is Appointment and Resignations. The first one we have is the appointment of the Old Home Day Committee. Andrew?
All right, Old Home Day Committee. Kathleen Walker, Chairwoman of the Old Home Day Committee, has asked the Board to appoint the following to the Old Home Day Committee: James Purvier, Terry Gah, Jerry Dobell, Craig Bolsero, and ex-officio Chief Dan Dowd. She had also requested that selectwoman Ridlack be appointed, but in reviewing the Conflict of Interest Law for Selectmen, it does not permit the appointment. I would recommend the Board make the appointments as presented.
So moved in with thanks.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, we will take the vote. Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
And I see Sluckman Singer has joined us. Dave?
Aye.
David, good. And I vote aye. So we're all set. And many thanks to the committee for their hard work and dedication. We appreciate what they're doing for the town. Next, we have the appointment of the Conservation Agent. Andrew?
As the Board is aware, Todd Gerard recently retired from his position as Conservation Agent after an extended absence. Four applications were received for the position, with one possessing the qualifications for the position. An interview for the position with the qualified applicant was conducted with Acting Conservation Agent Rose Conway, HR Director Lynn Dyer, and myself. Following consideration of the candidates, we highly recommend the Board appoint Angela Panassion to this position. This is a 40-hour-per-week salary position at an hourly rate of $38.18. I'd recommend the Board make the appointment.
So moved, and honestly, the resume is incredibly impressive. So thanks to the crew that, that vetted all the candidates, so, well done.
Indeed. Do you have a second?
Second.
So all right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
I vote aye. All right, thank you very much, and welcome aboard. Moving on, we are going to number three, excuse me, which is the appointment Finance Director in Transition. Andrew?
As the Board is aware, Finance Director Donna Folliot has submitted her notice of retirement this upcoming September. In order to ensure a smooth transition of this critical office, we conducted an immediate search for her successor to train under her direction through her retirement. Three applicants were received for the position. Interviews were conducted with Finance Director Donna Folliot, member of the Finance Committee Kristen Lemare, HR Director Lynn Dyer, and myself. Following consideration of the candidates, we highly recommend that the Board appoint Ashley Orbzut to this position.
Yeah, I think Ashley's gonna do a great job, so.
The motion. Do we have a second?
Good.
I'll second for discussion.
I think, David, did you second? I'm just, can you talk just to make sure we have, we can hear you?
Second, can you hear me?
Yeah, much better now. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll open this up for discussion. Patsy?
So the town, the funding structure is, is really probably the second most, the biggest position in this town. And I'm kind of concerned that we don't have that municipal certification yet. And we would, we would appoint somebody without that certification with the hopes that it would be obtained. I'm just a little nervous. There's only two years of municipal background. And a lot of that was during the Zoom time, and I'm not sure that, I'm just a little nervous with, with taking over this level of position without this much, enough municipal experience. Mistakes costs a lot of money. There, there's tons of legal compliance. It just makes me a little nervous. I would, I would have, did any of the other applicants have their municipal certification?
No, no other applicants possessed governmental certification.
Just said, makes me a little nervous. That, that's, that's it.
Dave, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I think, I kind of agree. I mean, how does she have, does she have a path forward to get that certification? And what does that entail? Is that a long, lengthy thing or?
She's testing for certification in May, and it took three, it took essentially two years to get that certification. So you could make it contingent on certification if you'd like.
It takes two years to get the certification?
Yes.
And, and we didn't attract any applicants that already have that certification?
No.
Wow.
She will have it in May.
May, yeah.
So what happens, what happens in May when, if it's not obtained? We're kind, we don't really, I mean, we're not gonna go back and say, now you step down. So that's the problem when you say things are with contingencies on them. Now, I think Ashley does a great job. I have no complaints. It just makes me nervous that this is, if technically, if, if, when, when our, when our last TA moved, the question was, should, should our Finance Director or our Chief of Police, you know, be the temporary Town Administrator? So this is, again, a very high position, and it just, it makes me nervous that there's only, only two years of municipal. And a lot of that was during Zoom. I know there was a little bit of leave involved in that. So I'm just, it just said it nervous, it makes me nervous to appoint somebody that may, may struggle to be able to handle this position.
I don't, I think, I like her qualifications. I don't think, I don't think the word struggle is, is a fair assessment. But Andrew, is, is she able to, on behalf of the town, without certification, file documents and things like that?
Yes.
Documents on behalf of the town without certification? She is.
Yes, most definitely.
Okay.
Adam, Chair.
David?
So Andrew, in your opinion, and that of the other interviewers, she is eminently qualified?
Yes, very much so. And it was a unanimous decision of everyone on the, on the reviewing team.
All right, so my comments on this are simply that, you know, we on the Board have to rely upon our department heads, and I have faith in them and their decisions, and I have faith in her. I understand where Ms. Ridlack is coming from. I have no problem with putting a caveat for May. And then we can take it from there. You know, we have had issues in the past. No one here is a fortune teller. We've had employees that had great certifications in the past and didn't work out either. So we have to go with what our department heads recommend. She's a known quantity. If she gets her certification in May, then everybody's happy. If she doesn't get her certification in May, you know, then I have, I have no problem saying, okay, you know, let's put a caveat on there, and we can address that at that time, or we can cross that bridge when we come to it. And we can decide whether we want to, you know, extend it for six more months. If she has to retest, whatever the process is, I don't know. But at least for the time being, we have someone who is qualified and recommended by our department heads and the interview team.
And Patsy?
And Donna will be here for the, she'll be training for the transition. And I know that talk about possibly having to stay on for a while for, you know, to help in the town. So I just said, it just makes me nervous. I've seen big mistakes made and, and lots of consequences with that. And again, and I'm an auditor, you know, I worry about risk. It's just like, it's, it's like in my genetics, so.
Actually, Donna, very strong relationship, you know, building that office together. So I know that Ashley's comfortable with turning to Donna, you know, any time that she does have a question. So I think there'll be a very smooth transition moving forward.
And one more question. With contract negotiations, would there be a contract involved? Or would there be a step? What is, what is, how is that?
It'll be on the salary scale. The, the Board had voted previously to make this position on the salary scale as a, believe, an R-15 position. So it'll be a line within that scale. But the R-15 will be once she, when she actually becomes, you know, the full Finance Director. It'll be a R-12 position through the transition.
Okay.
So, so then that, with the chair, then that transition would go through May or through?
September.
Through September, okay.
Any further discussion? All right, so we do have the motion and a second. I will now take the vote. Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. Congrats to, where are we? All right, moving on, we are, sorry. Resignation of the Part-Time Building Inspector. Andrew?
Attaches a letter from William LaPage resigning his position as Part-Time Building Inspector effective May 30, 2021. A letter thanking him for his service has been prepared and is in your signed folder. The Board should accept his resignation.
And with regret, thanks, Bill. Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
No.
Bill?
Oh, I.
Yes, did you say no?
I agree with Bill with regret.
Regret.
Aye. With regret.
So Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye. It passes. It's unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the scheduled appointments, so at 7:00 PM. Andrew, are we good going now? Are they here?
Uh, let's see. I believe that they are. Yes. If you don't mind. I just have to find them.
Hey, Andrew, did you, oh, sorry, you saw Mark. Oh, you're good.
Yep, yep, I got it. All right, so Blue Water Property Group and Vape Colony Property Group, representing a proposed development project at 53 Sturbridge Road, have requested time on your meeting to provide public information relative to the Planning Board's proposed zoning height amendment in the BEP and industrial zones on town meeting. So I will turn it over to their development team and Mark Donahue from Fletcher and Tilton to, to give the brief presentation.
All right, and before you do that, Mark, Mark, this is, he's gonna take over right now?
Whenever you're ready, ma'am, Chair.
Okay, fine. Again, I would just ask that you adhere to the timeframe for about, if you could keep it within 10 minutes, it would be a good thing. I believe it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, and thank you, members of the Board. Once again, my name is Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton. I'm an attorney, and I represent Bay Colony Properties in Bluewater with regard to this. Representatives of both are here this evening. Bill Walk from Bay Colony, John DiColo and Alexandra Eskamia from Bluewater are also here. Both of the companies have a long history of successful development, particularly in the industrial and commercial sector. That has brought them to central Massachusetts now for a while, looking for opportunities as the burgeoning need for commercial and industrial space, particularly in the logistics center, is driving a lot of activity in and around our area. As Andrew mentioned, they have under agreement the so-called Kozowski property at 53 Sturbridge Road, and are very interested in moving forward. And as we mentioned in the workshop that we had back in March, and mentioned at the Planning Board meeting earlier this month, we have a very interested and motivated user who's trying to move on a very fast track. Just to make sure that the table is set, the zone change proposed by the Planning Board is twofold, both to increase the height, the idea of increasing within these districts tax revenue and creating new jobs. It was reviewed at the Planning Board. The reason why different heights for the BEP or Business Enterprise Zone, 110 feet as opposed to the industrial general of 75 feet, is proposed. But as you can see on the chart, it is a limited impact for two ways. First, a minimum lot size of 75 acres, and therefore the applicable properties are limited. And secondly, it mandates a three times the setback otherwise required, which we'll talk about briefly. So what this does is really open the door. It doesn't permit anything as a matter of right. What it allows is the Planning Board in the future to grant a special permit if an applicant is able to convince the Board that it meets the stringent standard for a special permit. And any development of this size would obviously involve other permitting by the town and by the state through the Conservation Commission, MEPA, Mast Dot, and the like. So it's really a first step, and that's the opportunity that we seek by working with the Planning Board on the change. As you can see on the plan, the sites are feeling limited. Sites one through four are in the BEP zone. Site five is in the industrial general. Those are the only sites that essentially meet the dimensional requirements of the 75 acres. So the question that you should be asking, or probably are, is why? Why do, why is the change needed? And why is it good for Charlton? The change is really driven by the change in habits of all of us as consumers. We used to go to the store and pick up things that we needed. Those things came from big warehouses, went to smaller warehouses, and got delivered to the store as needed. All of that has changed and only been exacerbated by COVID. Now we expect things faster, sooner, and closer to us and more complete in our orders through the e-commerce. And that has created the need for, as you see here, fulfillment centers, which go into parcel sortation with ultimate delivery to consumers and the like. Those facilities need to be fairly large. These are not your grandfather's warehouses, so to speak. That demand drives a great deal of need for size. And the difficulty is, the desire to put these facilities where people are means only logically, there is less and less developable space. And so what the proposed zoning change feeds into is the trend in the industry that instead of going out to go up, to build multi-story buildings on footprints. So what you have here is approximately a 650,000 square foot footprint on a site, but it would consist of more than 2 million square feet of storage area that would be available. That in turn mandates that instead of the traditional type of warehouse we may have all had experience in or be thinking of, these have very specialized technology, very specialized material handling that's developed on a proprietary basis by these users in order to be able to move goods around these facilities to where they belong. And so the whole effort that we propose to work with the Planning Board with is to be able to allow sites to go up instead of spreading out, therefore reducing impacts on the environment and making land available to do that. Why is this a good idea for Charlton? We see it as consistent with your master plan, which clearly made it clear that economic development in these two zones was a goal of the community so as to diversify your tax base and create an opportunity for non-residential properties to be able to contribute in that fashion. And by increasing the density on a site, one is able to allow that procedure to occur in some fashion. So you end up in a site that you can now, by having the increase in size, effectively compete for these requirements where other communities in proximity to Charlton don't have it. It allows Charlton to essentially leverage its unique and positive location with access, particularly on Route 20 with its proximity to the interstate highway system, and to be able to do that. The scope of investment that the user that we are down the road here is more than $300 million. That in turn results in significant taxable revenue to the town that is a perpetuating source. And we would expect if, if the zone change were to proceed, because we see that as a gating issue, to be working with your Board and the assessors to better understand the exact impact of the taxes and work forward to that. Beyond that, these are not just warehouses in which goods are left to allow to collect dust. They require a number of people, many of whom are employed from the local area for this type of facility of this size proposed by our user. You'd be looking in excess of 1,000 jobs and all of the ancillary benefit that that may come from. So what this provides is a direct correlation between investment in the community by a third party that results in additional capacity for tax revenue that can then be deployed as the community decides is best. And whether that's the investment in schools, investment in public safety, investment in infrastructure, or simply reducing the residential burden, all of those things are decisions that your Board, together with the town meeting, will be involved in. Why now? Why now is basically because we do have a user who has determined that this is an appropriate location, but needs the kind of density on the site that can only be achieved by the increase in height. And it is therefore moving on a very fast track. And if, if we are able to work with the Planning Board to be successful at town meeting, we would expect that this would be the first of perhaps many meetings with your Board to make you better understand the user, what their plans are, and be able to have quality dialogue as to how they can better fit within your community. It is not an academic exercise as far as Bay Colony and Bluewater. We have essentially proof of concept to move forward. So what's the relief? What is 110 feet? And there is some benefit to at least having a couple of sites in town you're familiar with. The blue line that you see about halfway is the grade essentially at the Millennium Power Plant. And obviously, it is well above the roadway. But it gives you an idea that the building, the primary building is 100 feet, 105 feet above grade, and the tower goes above that. The communication tower that you're probably familiar with off of Route 20 is another example that one could see for that. About halfway up that tower is 110 feet to be able to do that. Our site, we have evaluated and are comfortable that it will be possible to be able to meet the requirements as far as adequately protecting abutting properties from adverse impacts because of the height. Much of that is driven by the size of the site. And what you see in the next slide is some of the benefit that even neighbors can have. The site itself is capable of being developed today for a 36-foot-high building, but only, as you can see, really all the way out to the red line. It's therefore a much flatter building, but it gets closer and closer to abutting properties. The special permit to 50 feet would retract that somewhat. But when you go to the 110 feet, what you end up with is a consolidation of the construction of the site into the interior, preserving, most importantly, the perimeter vegetation, established vegetation, which blocks views from Route 20, Route 169, and from abutting properties. And we provided the Planning Board with a number of slides that we could share with you or make available to you for your review in the future. And so in conclusion, these type of users require more height because they require more space that, that just isn't logical to try to do on a flat, single-level building. You're in a unique position as a community to take advantage of those requirements while still preserving and protecting the community through the special permit process. And we do have that particular user ready to go. This site has been identified by the town as part of its master plan, as one of the key sites for economic development moving forward to try to achieve that goal of diversifying the tax base. And we therefore would ask your Board, once the Planning Board has acted, to help us and endorse the zone changes at town meeting. And then, once that issue is hopefully done in the affirmative, to work with us to be able to meet the, the user, understand their plans, and work through issues in a collaborative. Understand their plans and work through issues in a collaborative fashion to make it most public. The slide that you see here is kind of where we are now. We will be conducting affirmative public outreach through Zoom and advertising that through various medium. So townspeople can hear about the proposal ahead of time. We've reached out and I hopeful will have the opportunity to meet briefly with the finance committee to let them know what it's about. And obviously this would culminate with town meeting. The speed of the development that I mentioned before. Would has us on a schedule shortly thereafter, almost simultaneously of making the initial filing with the state. Under the VIPA activity, which your board will be receiving. And have an opportunity to provide public comment for. We'll go through that process, work in a collaborative fashion with your board. The planning staff and the planning board moving ultimately to site plan application. Which we would expect to be hopefully in the summer of this year. That's a lot in a hurry, but I, I want to be sensitive to your time. Obviously, I'm glad you answered any questions and either Bill, John or Alexander are obviously available also to answer any inquiry you may have. But we look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will open this up to my peers if you have any comments before we move forward, keeping in mind that. This is still in the hands, of course, of, of the planning board.
Madam Chair.
David.
If I may, a couple of just quick questions and comments. And I will say, I think this is actually highly unusual. That year before us, since this is completely the authority of the planning board and I expect you'll be presenting at town meeting. I just hope that the planning board is aware you're here, the last thing we want to do is create the impression that. There's an attempt to circumvent or backdoor the planning board. That's number one. I believe there's a question posted. That said, at the planning board meeting. I'm going to give all my comments and questions and then they can just answer them. That was supposedly stated at the planning board that you didn't have a tenant, so. A, some clarification on whether they have a possible tenant or not is number one. Number two. If this is potentially a one hundred and ten foot structure. For the public's knowledge, if they're going to try and visualize this, yes or no, I believe that would be the equivalent of an eight to ten story building. And the last point, I want to make sure we have clarification on as well as that this is a citizen's petition. And the planning board has not taken any action on this or any vote to recommend it, at least as of now.
Thank you, David.
If, if I might, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Singer, for your comments. We appreciate it. I, I, I hope we have done a good enough job. To make it clear that we were really coming for informational purposes and using your forum to basically. Educate the, the electorate moving forward. The planning board did not take a vote at its meeting last week because. It ended up by the time the meeting ended with only three members present. And so they wanted to afford the opportunity for those other members to be available, so we expect that they will be taking a vote. And, and moving forward and we would welcome the opportunity. To make a presentation at town meeting and we'll be discussing that process with the moderator. As to the planning board, the comment with regard to a tenant, it may have been the question got confused because there was another project also on the table. We do have a potential user, we're not in the position this evening to be able to indicate who that is. But the reason that we are moving with such speed. To try to go through this process, remembering that we just met. With your board and the planning board back in March on this really. Was all because that user is imminent and therefore we believe that they are essentially committed to the site, they have reviewed the site and the location. Approved it. And if we can get through the gating issue of how height are prepared to proceed. And, and become more visible in the, in the town, which will include your board. The other question you asked with regard to height. As far, it's closer probably to an eight story building than a ten. We use the millennium as an example. We do have a couple of slides that can show also it in relation to the communication tower on Route twenty. So they can get an idea what that is. And also potentially Saint Joseph's Church, which is the building. There's a communication tower, so it gives you an idea, the whole tower is a hundred and ninety feet. The hundred and ten is looked off, Saint Joseph's Church. The building itself is about fifty-three feet above grade. The spire goes to a hundred and thirteen. But recall that the site, because of the setbacks and the configuration of the building. Our site, for example, the building would be in, on, as far as some of the facing of the roadway. More than a thousand feet off of the roadway, so it would be quite far back. I think that answered your question, Mr. Singer, if I missed one, I apologize, but just let me know.
No, I think, I think that adjusts them all. I just wanted to make sure that we had all that clear and anyone watching also had a very clear idea of the, the actual height. Sometimes it's difficult to envision the height of a tower.
It certainly is, there's no doubt about that.
Right, but when you say, hey, four story, eight stories, it's much easier sometimes for people to envision what they're looking into.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member? Steve and Patsy?
Mine, mine is, mine's a probably easy one. Are there any visuals of, say. Other places in town, Dresser Hill, some of our high points, what I, what I will be looking at if, if. At this height, at that location in town?
Yes, we, we've done it actually from a few locations and the interest of time, I'll start with Carpenter Hill Road and if, if that. Has enough information, we can pass it on. Alex, can you go to the, the slides we have on Carpenter Hill? So this is, just to show location as to where the, what you're going to see now is up on the hill. This is the view you have today, looking over the, the side. The building that you saw just emerge out of the ground like Godzilla. Is a fifty-foot building, so that would be permitted under the current zoning that existed with a special permit. The next slide gives you an idea of what it is at a hundred and ten. So it, it's certainly going to be observable as a fifty-foot building would be observable. But that gives you an indication. A, a more proximate location. Might be from Cape and Hill Sanctuary, Alex, if we can go to that from the open field perhaps.
I, I think from Cape and you're, you're going to kind of be down below the trees, trees and there'll be.
You will be, yeah.
What about Dresser Hill? Dresser Hill is kind of one of our treasures in town. That view, people, people.
Yep. I, um. I'm not sure we have a depiction from Dresser Hill. It's up there. I don't know if we can queue that up quickly or not, but it's, it's quite, as you can see here, it gives you some idea of. In comparison to Carpenter Hill, which you just saw that the distance, so it's going to be much more in the distance. If we've got it, we'll queue it up for you. Great, if we can show what that view would be. Current view and you can just barely see on the horizon. Obviously, depending how big your screen is. The idea of where the building would be. That obviously benefits from the, the natural vegetation being maintained at the distance.
Dave, did you have a question?
I did, and, and a clarification, I did watch the meeting last, planning board meeting last week. And David, to David's question, they. The, the, it was, it was the project on the west side of town. On the Sturbridge line that did not have a tenant. If it was a little more speculation type thing that they were, but, but this particular. Project, Mr. Donnie was talking about did. But I'm going to ask a question here to Mr. Donnie, who was, if, if the town were to approve seventy-five feet, is that a deal breaker for your project? It's a loaded question.
That's okay. I, I think it is. I, I, I hate to say it, it definitely is, but I think it is. The, the hundred, a hundred and ten feet comes from essentially. A model that a national, a national user has and is familiar with. And as I mentioned, much of this isn't so much the structure itself. But much of this relates to the internal very specialized technology and material handling equipment that goes inside the building. So to some extent, the guts of the building, that type of equipment. As far as an investment can be equal to the shell skin and core in some fashion. And that's obviously a model that's both proprietary and important to know is going to work to make that type of investment. And that's what's needed to fit within the hundred and ten feet. So I, I, I'm not in a position to, because I haven't heard directly from the tenant that it couldn't work. But my sense is, is that they would look elsewhere. Because they wouldn't want to try to recreate and see if that could all be done while still meeting their need, which is to be operational in twenty twenty-three.
Mark, it's, it's John to call, hello, hello, Madam Chair and the rest of the board members. I'm a partner with Bluewater Property Group, so I can, I can answer that more specifically for this specific user, for this specific operation, yes. The seventy-five feet would mean they could not locate this operation. Unless it was, you could exceed the, the seventy-five feet.
Okay, thank you. That was just a fair question, as well. I wanted to understand it and I wanted other people to really.
Yeah, I think this, this. And just to address Mr. Singer's question, yeah, this again, we, we, the, our only purpose here to be, is to be informative. We know that projects like this are, are large and, and if they haven't been built in the area before, they can, they can appear to be. Difficult to understand. And so when we do these type of projects, our main goal is to be as informative as possible. And to provide any amount of information that allows the local community to understand what is being proposed. And as, as Mark has said a couple of times, we, we know that the only way these. Projects work is to establish a collaborative. Approach where there's a very coordinated, in a very coordinated fashion, you're able to give. In a very open fashion, a clear understanding of, of the project, of the operation, of what will happen. And how through the land use process. Everything is well studied in a very comprehensive fashion so that when you do get to the point. Where the site plan is ready to be voted upon, there is no mystery, there is, there's nothing that isn't well understood. And clearly there isn't something that hasn't been well evaluated and studied. So that our, our only purpose is to establish that spirit of, of collaboration. Where we're, we're here tonight simply to answer questions, to provide information. Knowing that this is going to be a process with, with many opportunities to continue to convey that, that. Information and hopefully create what is, we hope, a win-win for this operation, finding a home, but for you also as. That potential home, being very comfortable with, with that operation.
Any other board members have any comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just briefly.
Yeah, Bill.
So I think conceptually all of us on the board are in favor of economic development in one form or another. My concern with this, and again, this is more directed at my colleagues as well as the residents, is that. We're basically being asked as a community. To make an arguably significant change to multiple areas in town zoned accordingly. For a specific tenant. Now, for variety of good reasons, I understand, I understand an awful lot of people finance that the tenant doesn't want to release their name yet. Just for me alone, I'm not going to be able to back this at town meeting at all. Making a significant change to multiple areas in town for a specific entity. That for, again, variety of good reasons, will not release their name, their business, et cetera. So again, that's just me, I am one out of, you know, hundreds of people who will, who will attend town meeting. But I personally have concerns. Again, not, not ones that are showstoppers, but I have concerns around changing. Zoning for a specific tenant and we don't know who that tenant is. So again, I know tonight is just informational, but I thought it'd be fair to the applicant. As well as the residents in town to at least let people know where I currently stand, so that's, so I don't have any questions, it's just, just more of a statement of fact.
Thanks, Bill. Any, any other comments from? Board members? Andrew, did you have any questions?
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, I, I thank you for being here tonight to present the information and to answer questions. Think it was time well spent. And if, if someone has a question after the meeting, is there a number or a way that they can reach out to you?
Yes, there is. Our contact information can certainly be obtained probably most directly either from. Andrew or from the planning director Randy Benson. And as I said, we will be publishing perhaps as early as later this week. In some social media and other forums, some opportunities that we will be available to answer any people's questions, almost in the fashion of a virtual open house.
Excellent, all right. Well, thank you again for being here this evening.
Thank you for your time.
All right, moving on, we are now under. New Business, the twenty twenty-one Scholarship Awards. Andrew?
Sorry, just give me one second, I just need to do some. Tend the. Maintenance here. All right. Twenty twenty-one Scholarship Awards. The scholarships awarded by the Board of Selectmen are the Jesse Smith, Nehemiah Stone and Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund. The Colby Scholarship recipient is chosen, chosen by the Colby family members. There are not enough funds in the scholarship at this time. Two scholarship applications were received for the Jesse Smith Scholarship. And they both qualify as they are within the district guidelines of the scholarship. One scholarship application was received for Nehemiah B. Stone. As in the past, when the motion is made to award the scholarship, the student's name is not revealed. The motion should be made to include the number of the applicants. The award, the award is based on the interest earned for each scholarship. The scholarships will be awarded to the student directly, which will help with the purchase of books and supplies. The following recommend, the following are the recommended motions. Move that the Board of Selectmen award the twenty twenty-one Jesse B. Smith Scholarship to applicants one and two in the amount of a hundred dollars each. And move that the Board of Selectmen award the twenty twenty-one Nehemiah B. Stone Scholarship to applicant number three in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. Once awarded, we'll, we will notify the school and the student of the award.
Excellent, thank you, Andrew. Do we have a, a motion? Bill, you're muted.
Sorry, first, just want, just want to say, I, having read all the essays, I can only state that I'm very happy that I'm an old man. I would have not applied for college now because there's no way I could compete with these people. That being said, I would like to motion as, as stated.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we will take the vote then. Bill?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Patsy?
Hi.
Steve?
I think we lost Steve.
Yeah, I know, I, I was afraid of that. He'll be back and I, all right, so we can continue the vote, I and congratulations to, to all. And I too was very impressed by the answers to, to the, to the question posed to them. Very, very insightful and enlightening.
There's a joke in there somewhere about losing Steve, but I won't get to it.
He's back, see?
Build the back end.
All right, so moving on, let's go on, we're not, we're still under new business, number two, the Town Administrator Evaluation. You want to take us into that?
Sure, so at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. The board was asked to conduct the annual Town Administrator Evaluation for the period of April first, twenty twenty to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Attached to the packet are the evaluations of my performance provided by each member of the board. The written evaluation was divided into seven categories with each item rated accordingly as follows, between five being. Excellent or highly commendable and down to one being unsatisfactory. A summary of the ratings, and I won't read every single person's one, but I'll just give a, give a verbal summary, so in board relations was a four point four. Personnel, four point two. Financial management, four point four. General management, four point six. Community relations, four point six. Department, departmental and governmental relations, four point four. Support of the Board of Selectmen's goals, four point eight, for an overall assessment of four point five. And personally, I'd just like to thank the board for you guys' support over the past year and truly thankful to work for. A board that truly exemplifies professionalism and really is a pleasure to work with, so, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Andrew. Any comments from the board members? I know we wrote our comments and this, by the way, of course, is a public record, anyone can, can, can review it and. So, or who wanted to say something? David?
Yeah, just for the.
Yeah, just for the benefit of those watching, this on the scores, a three is satisfactory. Everything that Andrew got was satisfactory or above. And I believe you'll you'll see in my comments, Andrew, if you read it, you understand the only reason I gave you a three under Community Relations is I don't even think we should have asked that question this year. Since the reality is you've had almost no opportunity to actually be out in the public meeting with everyone, business owners and community leaders and parades and events, because we haven't had any. So what you you have had to do, I still gave you satisfactory. But I do believe that once we open up and and you're out there, that will become a four or five.
Thank you, David.
I agree.
Yeah, Karen, through you?
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, I just want to say both to the audience and to Andrew. So I've had the opportunity in my career, both politically and professionally, get a lot of reviews and, you know, to select my singer's point. Three is average. There's nothing wrong with average, but as one of my bosses told me when I was a when I was a much younger executive, that he's not, he wasn't going to congratulate me for hanging a picture in my office correctly, that, look, you're here to do a job and you do it well. So that's a three. Reality is, this is probably one of the better reviews that I've ever given, and I'm not too proud to admit that one of my mistakes, looking back on my two years or so on the board, was not recommending Andrew as my first choice for the TA back in the day. That's a maya culpa, and I'll follow my sword on that. I think he's done a fabulous job. I think, you know, like everyone else, we all have room for improvement, but looking forward to having him around for a long time. And Andrew, seriously, I think you're doing a heck of a job.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? And I and I just, I will reiterate something I did say on on the the forum, and, you know, you you really had a short learning curve. You joined us, you hit the ground running. And, you know, you, this pandemic threw us all for great alue, and you really navigated the uncharted waters very, very well. And kudos to you for that. I mean, it's it wasn't easy. Your first year.
They clearly didn't know much else about, you know, kind of what the air workings were. So it was basically, yeah, this is don't.
It's gonna be a piece of cake from Rockin' the Park moving forward, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Absolutely. Through the chair.
Yeah.
Andrew, Andrew was I I agree with with all the other comments. I mean, you you definitely hit the ground running. And then people were throwing soft horses in front of you to slow you down, but you kept leaping over and you didn't slow down. You just kept going. I can't wait till those soft horses are clear and they'll do you. They'll do the potential. Every I had a lot of questions for you over the over the year. Being my first year on the board, you answered them immediately. You answered them brightly, smartly. You most of them were right off the top of your head, and if you didn't have the answer, you would get right back from me in a timely fashion. That's 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 just kind of good job. Kudos.
Keep those questions coming, Steve. Keeps me sharp.
And Andrew, I just want to say that I did contact all the board members and said that you are my favorite when everybody, even as a planning board chair. So just, you know, want to take credit for that. And I think you're doing an awesome job. I am a pain in the butt to deal with all the time. I I am, I I know I am, but and you deal with me well. So I think you're doing a great job.
And think about it, he's got how many of us and we change, right? And that's not an easy position to to be in, for sure. And I I really appreciate your calm demeanor, your your you're very genuine, you're honest. So, and you know, and you know, this board has been about transparency. And you you understood that, and thank you for helping us, you know, gain the trust back, I think, with the community. And all our goals, you know, but how we prioritize things, and really you've done an excellent job. So that's that's all I'll say for now, and we'll we'll move on. If anyone else has any comments? Again, can't wait to see what you're going to do next year, Andrew.
From the arms length.
We should probably let him off the spot so we don't care.
All right.
All right, we'll move along.
It's supposed to be about me. It's supposed to be about Karen. So moving on.
No, 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 no. Remember, I'm still the chair. I run this meeting here. Nope, we're gonna move right along. So old business, four-score change in ownership, Andrew?
Yeah. So right now, that is still before legal counsel. I should have that back by next week. We just had some clarify some items that we had to clarify in the rough draft. So I'll have that. I should have that. Considering the next meeting is next week, I should, if not, I'll be at the next. So.
Next, we have the Committee Reports, Board of Selectmen Committee Reports. First one up is CMR PC, Patsy and Bill?
Patsy, nothing for me.
Economic Development Commission, Steve. Anything new?
No, we have not since our last meeting. The comments that I made on that one, I would encourage the any Economic Development Commission members to to try to if they haven't watched it, I knew that some of them were on it, watch those planning board meetings, particularly the topics that we were talking about earlier with with the panelists that we hear. There's a lot of things happening. The planning board is working very hard. I'm great. They're doing a great job. And I think the economic BBC needs to get a little more. It would benefit them to watch some of those so they're so they're on board and to get moving forward. We're putting some marketing together and things like that, and it's coming along. Coming on.
Thanks, Steve. Next is the Fire Station Building Committee, and actually, they're not meeting till tomorrow. So, Andrew, there's nothing new there either. I'm not missing anything, right?
No, tomorrow they should have the the estimate to use for their article on town meeting. So that's the one, I guess, update from the last one. So for the next meeting, you will have that number for consideration. And they say part part of the next meeting, too, will be just making the recommendations on the Warren articles as well.
Thank you. The next committee report, Marijuana Advisory Committee, Patsy and Steve?
There was just a meeting right before this, and and it's not I'm nothing to share because it was all about the four score that everybody already knows about. Change in ownership. Other than that, I mean, I hear green gold, you know, has steady sales and they're doing well. They're in, they have reported everything, you know, they were happy. So that that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Patsy. Sex offender by law committee, David?
That is still planned for the fall town meeting, and I don't see any issue with that.
All right. And finally, we can probably take this off, right, Bill? Slide pen advisory committee?
Yeah, probably. I mean, generally speaking, I was keeping on until town meeting, but yeah, for all intents and purposes, we're gonna shut.
All right, excellent. We'll note that. All right. So moving on, Board of Selectment Policy Review. Andrew, we don't have any?
No policies, no.
All right. And now we go to Henry, our Student Select Person Report. Take it away, Henry.
Thank you. I'm just gonna share my screen. All right. All right, so. So on yesterday, Monday, the twenty-sixth, the district as a whole kind of entered its final homestretch of the year. So yesterday was the start of the transition to full in-person learning across all grade levels, and that includes a high school. So there are no longer no more online classes, no more asynchronous learning. So everyone is in person as a whole, except the students that are still opted to be remote. But that's about fifty kids out of the two hundred and ten seniors right now, to put that number in perspective. So Shepherd Hill is fully back, and students have six all six periods each day. So each class is meeting five times a week. And since all students are in the building, this means lunches being held for the first time since pre-COVID. So instead of the traditional lunch tables, everyone is at individual desks, and they're spread out to ensure social distancing. And the free lunches that have been distributed throughout the entirety of the year are still being given to students, too. So in the classroom, students are also three feet away, and this was the same facet as it was during the half-day models. And just a little alteration to the schedule, the school added a seventh period that just returns to how it was pre-COVID. And so for seniors, that means they get to leave early, and this helps with the parking lot traffic. That was a problem during the half-days, and this also allows teachers to pick up a prep period that is worked out in their contracts. So it seems like as a whole, the school community is, obviously, everyone's a little tired. It's been a lot of transitions, a lot of decisions being made in school committee meetings. But most are really glad to see the return of a normal routine. And each day, more students and teachers are being vaccinated alike. So the COVID hesitation is starting to recede, too. So senior activities, as you know, May approaches, administration is putting the senior activities at kind of the forefront of the school, because, you know, it's been a weird year, so they're hoping to send the seniors out, right? So there's still a lot of uncertainty with each event, but there is a general framework. So prom was previously canceled, as I reported at the last meeting, but it is back on for Thursday, May twenty-seventh. And it will be at the new Polar Park, and this is instead of the DCU Center. So of course, there's going to be capacity limits following the state guidelines, but there will be a hundred and forty students that can attend as of right now. And it's unfortunately going to have to come down to a lottery. But those that don't get in will be given priority to other events, such as the senior banquet. And of course, there's going to be ample restrictions, only upperclassmen, so no juniors, no outside dates, and unfortunately, no dancing. And so along with that, the senior banquet is also going to occur on Friday, March twenty-first, at Wachusett Mountain. And there's going to be more details to come about that. Prom is being planned pretty extensively right now. So for seniors, too, this Friday, Liam Coleman, the local musician who's going to be heading to Nashville next year, is giving a senior sunset performance in the parking lot, and everyone's thrilled for that. There's going to be food trucks, and students will be able to park their cars in staggered parking spots to meet the COVID regulations. So graduation is still going to be planned, too. That's on June sixth, and there's going to be a lot more details coming out about that. And separate from those main events, there's still going to be the senior barbecue as is every year. And there's also going to be a senior pep rally, as there wasn't a pep rally in the fall, a senior breakfast, and a senior parade. So with the return of full in-person learning, there's a lot more activities starting to occur. So spring sports started yesterday, Monday, May twenty, April twenty-sixth. So that includes spring track wrestling that didn't occur in the winter because of COVID, baseball, softball, and lacrosse. And so there's going to be competitions throughout May and into June. And we're all hopeful for some MIAA state tournaments that haven't happened since COVID started. And along with that, the music department also continues to compete in virtual competitions. But they do have their first in-person competition on May eighth at Waltham High School, and there will obviously be a lot of safety measures. But that's their first in-person competition since COVID started. And just some miscellaneous items, the National Honors Society inducted its new members on Wednesday, April twenty-fourteenth, the Drive by Induction, and they're also planning on finishing their end-of-the-year fundraiser and hosting a cornhole tournament on the turf for Thursday, May thirteenth. And traditionally, so Shepherd Hill is conducting the AP exams next two weeks, as is every year. And that's going to allow students to take the AP exam and potentially earn credit for their college curriculum courses. And with MCAS two, even though it was waived this year for juniors as a graduation requirement, Shepherd Hill will still be hosting the test for juniors and current sophomores, so they can potentially qualify for the Abigail Adams Scholarship and be on the lookout for the senior yard signs throughout Charlton. And we're going to hand those out at senior pep rally, and parents are excited to honor their seniors. That's it.
Hey, Karen, through you?
Yep, go ahead, Bill.
Hey, Henry, so you're graduating early June. So that's, does that mean that you're with us next month, too?
Yep, I'm going to be at the main meetings up until my graduation.
Cool. Well, with the board's indulgence, if you're feeling ambitious, I'd love to see a pros and cons from you on keeping the student representative from Shepherd Hill as opposed to as opposed to somebody from Baytown.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll definitely work on that.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions for Henry? That's exciting that the prom was put back on, Henry. I I was, that's really good to hear. It's unfortunate everyone can't make it or, you know, it because of capacity, but.
And there's no dancing. I was. I want to make a Footloose reference, but I don't think anyone like.
Only the old folks would remember it. Anyway, okay, now we're moving on down to the Town Administrative Report, Andrew.
All right. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge two former public safety officials who had recently passed away. Retired Charlton Police Officer Alvin Stone of Charlton and retired Charlton firefighter Ronald Rivet, also of Charlton. Both men served the community with pride and distinction and will be dearly missed by the departments that they left. Chief Dowd has asked that three Charlton Police employees be recognized for exemplary exemplary performance on the morning of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. An organized Connecticut street gang has been plaguing Connecticut, Mass. and Rhode Island for almost twenty-four months. Young adults and older kids from Hartford routinely steal cars in Connecticut, then drive to mass. Once in mass, they target rural areas for unlocked cars in their contents. These crimes take place in the early hours while victims are usually sleeping. Suspects will then steal a car while in mass and head back to Connecticut with an obtained pirate booty. These thieves have gotten more serious and brazen. Firearms and firearms have been stolen from motor vehicles. As we know, these subjects may have firearms. When purchased, the suspects have little or when pursued, the suspects have little regard for the cars they're attempting to elude the police with and often crash. On April seventeenth, at five oh one AM, dispatcher Shonda Tankersley, officers Brian Codron and Anthony Grivens were working the overnight shift. They learned of a stolen car coming out of Brookfield within five minutes of being stolen. Officer Grivens located the vehicle at a business on Route twenty as the suspect was fleeing on foot. Dispatcher Tankersley was instrumental in correcting some misinformation and getting officers to the scene. Sturridge Police, Mass. State Police, and Charlton Police then established a perimeter while awaiting K-9 response. The Mass. State Police K-9 was quickly able to locate the seventeen-year-olds responsible for for the theft. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication in potential danger that the police department personnel exposed themselves to that night or that morning, and that in these men and women are deserving of a recognition of a job well done. And then just finally, I want to thank Karen. You know, I want not not to be last, but, you know, figure I save it to the end. So, but you know, let's say how much of a pleasure it's been working with you over the past year and a half, you know, all the way all the way back to when you tracked me down at the MMA conference.
It feels like an eternity ago, doesn't it?
The last in-person one, it feels like before everything shut down. So just want to say how much of a pleasure it's been working with you and best of luck, you know, in your next your next phase.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, Madam Chair, if I may.
No, no.
But first, but first, if I may, in response to Chief Dowd's comments, I would like to extend, and I'll never speak for the rest of the board, but I would like to extend my gratitude to the personnel involved. And I have said repeatedly, and I always will, that Charlton's finest are not just Charlton's finest. They are, in reality, the finest in New England, really. And I'm very proud of the the team we have in Charlton. They always go above and beyond, and we we're all, I'm sure everyone in this community are very proud of them. That said, now I'll go to Karen. Yeah, so she thought getting off.
With the mute button, Andrew, where's the mute button?
Got him up, I know. But Karen, Karen, yeah, I mean, I I've said before, you you will be missed. I wish you the best. I know where you're going, and it's beautiful. So somewhat jealous, but I do, I I wish you guys the best. I hope you find the most happiness there.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it very much again, and I will miss all of you. And and again, I want to be the dead horse, but yeah, it's bittersweet, but I'll be watching. Anyway, we must continue on. This is more. The other business unknown at time of posting? Do we have any other business?
But Karen, you have to do it as, but wait.
Nine ninety-nine. Are hearing none, then the next thing, oh, next meeting announcement will be the next regular Board of Selectmen meeting will be May fourth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty PM via Zoom or hybrid. Andrew, Andrew, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so I wanted to get the feeling of the board, whether or not you want to hold the next meeting exclusively by Zoom, have a few people in person, or have the whole board in person, and we can we can accommodate however, however the board wants.
I'll go with whatever the board wants, but it's not like we're exactly a big group.
The hybrid sounds great because people will have an option, right? So if if one of us happens to be, you know, a little a little more intimidated by meeting in a group, then they have the option.
I know, and I know availability, you know, is a big thing now, too, now that Zoom is such a prevalent thing. It's like a lot of people have Zooms right around, you know, dinnertime and stuff like that. It just makes it a little bit more convenient. So again, you know, whatever was most convenient. So again, you know, whatever was most convenient or, or, you know, available for the, for the Board members.
So.
So I'd say include, oh, Steve, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, so, so just understanding what, so we'd be, we'd be in the, we'd be in the Selectmen's meeting room. Five of us wearing masks up on, in our chairs, not six feet apart, but so we'd have to be wearing our masks entirely.
Well, there's another question there in response to what Steve's talking about. If members of the Board are vaccinated, and I don't know everyone's current status, but if, if members of the Board are vaccinated, you're not required to wear a mask or socially distance if you're together.
Assuming it's all members.
Right. If, right, well, then you, you, if you have outside public, you can't, you don't know if they've been vaccinated. But if all the Board members have been, then there's no requirement for masking or distancing. You'd have to find out from every member whether they are or aren't.
Andrew, do you happen to know what other communities are doing?
You know, it's been kind of a, it depends on where you go. You know, some people are fully back in person with the public participating, but on Zoom. I think it all depends on what kind of facilities and, and setup that you have to allow. You know, we've tried to kind of get it so that way we could get back to some level of in-person, mainly, you know, around the Boards that have plans that they need to be able to look at during, during meetings. I think it, it's more beneficial to them than maybe this forum where, you know, it's, there, there's less that we're, we're looking at, you know. But, you know, some conversations differ when you're, when you're in person with, with some people. So it might depend on what's on the agenda if you want to be in person versus, versus remote.
Yeah, and, and Karen, that's where I was going with that, because if we're only going to have a couple of things on the agenda, I mean, selfishly, I'd say, look, why don't we just have it on Zoom? Because if we're really just talking to reorg and potentially, because as a reminder, you know, first meeting afterwards, we'll be, we'll be doing our reorg. And, you know, it sounds like maybe voting on the four score and a couple administrative items. I mean, great, literally, it's next week. So unless something really dramatic happens in the next seven days, I'd probably say, look, let, let's just do the next one Zoom. And then we'll take it, you know, after that, potentially in person with obviously a hybrid option for people. But, you know, again, that's just my two cents. I mean, you know, again, all of us, we're like 10 minutes in town hall, so it's not a big deal. It's just, you know, driving down for like 15 minutes seems a bit overkill.
So it's a plan, we'll plan by Zoom.
That makes sense.
All right. All right. So we do have an executive session tonight. If anyone would have liked to bring us into it?
Promise this last one I'm reading, so somebody. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion under MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3, to discuss strategy. If you'd like to bargain or litigation, the chance of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body. And the Chair so declares, and to repeat, no contest for any other business if needed, and to adjourn.
I think, okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call. Bill?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Patsy?
Hi.
And I vote aye. It is 7:46. We are now in executive session.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, Henry. Good luck to you.